Okay, I would like to call the order to the Village of Lansing Planning Board Meeting. We'll form Monday, February 12th to order at 7:02 PM.
It's always 7:02.
It is always 7:02.
That's funny.
Well, 7:01.
First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for January 30th, 2024.
I move that we accept the minutes as written.
Motion by Lisa.
I'll second.
Second by Lorraine.
All in favor?
I heard Lorraine.
Oh, I heard Lorraine first.
It was a tie, kind of.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public, either in person or on Zoom, to bring anything up tonight that's not already on the agenda.
Susan Ainsley covering for the Board of Trustees.
Hey, Susan.
Hi, everyone.
Anybody else? Okay. I will entertain a motion to close the public comment period. Motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Lisa, all in favor.
Okay, first major item on the agenda is public hearing for special permit number 2024-4740 Northeast Pediatrics LLC located at 10 Graham West Road.
Tax parcel number 47.1-1-17.12 is proposing to construct additional parking spaces for their facility. That's for Village Code Section 145-42.2C, subsection 1, and 14558B2. A special permit is required. I will entertain a motion to open up a public comment period. Or while, qualmoly, public hearing, public comment period, public hearing, you know.
Move to open a public hearing regarding the request for additional spaces at Northeast Pediatrics.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Lisa, all in favor?
So I don't have a couple of people here with us tonight, and Mike is in his office. I don't have him up on my screen. Mike is in his office to help go through it, but did you want to introduce yourselves real quick?
Sure. My name's Hope Anderson. I'm the building and purchasing manager over at Northeast Pediatrics. This is kind of my baby project here.
Great.
Very big baby.
I'm Melissa Gonya. I'm the practice administrator at Northeast Pediatrics, and I am just here in case there are things that come up that you guys need answers for.
Mike, you want to kick us off?
You're muted, by the way.
Okay, you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, first of all, I do have the mailings for the special permit, so we'll make that official. I'll try to give you as much information as I can about this, and then you can go through and ask Hope questions or whatever you want to do with this. But first of all, the reasoning this is requiring a special permit is, in the commercial medium traffic district, C1 is for an alteration to a building or improved site. That itself does not kick in the special permit, but it does reference another section of the Village Code, which is kind of complicated. You have to meet all of the criteria of three items. And one of the items this proposal does not meet. The item reads, "There will be no change in category of use or in the amount of parking necessitated with respect to an existing or proposed building." So the reason I determined this is a special permit is Northeast Pediatrics does not have enough parking as it is, nor will they probably ever will. At this point, they have, I would say, 15 doctors on board, and that requires four spaces per physician. So there are 60, and then there's also, at times, there are 30 full-time employees. So you're looking at possibly 80 to 90 spots that are required. What is there at this point, correct me if I'm wrong, Hope, is between 45 and 50. So it's not reasonable to request another 30 spots in that area. But trying to do, trying to help out Northeast Pediatrics as much as we can at this point to maybe get a handful of extra spots, because most of, a lot of their customers now are parking at the Y and walking, trying to navigate that Graham Road West during the day, which is very difficult and unsafe. So that's why Hope contacted me, that's why we're here today. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to bring up a few things. I did get share on it, didn't I, Mike?
Yeah, you can share.
Okay. Bear with me a second.
That's probably hard to determine now if there's.
Okay, once when there was another, it's probably right on the grass.
Yeah.
Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, can you see my cursor, or do I need to come out there?
There you go, yes.
Okay. Right here, at this point, there are four, you can see a vehicle here. There are four spots right here, and what we're proposing is taking out those four spots and adding eight more in this area. The distance between the back of these vehicles, if they were parked in this area, and the back of these vehicles is approximately 22 to 23 feet. So there's enough space there to, for vehicles to pull in and back out. One of the, well, I'll back up. The mall itself, the village now owns Graham Road West, and I think you guys will remember that from the subdivision of the mall. The village received this area along with a slight little hammerhead over here. But what we also, what we also received was an easement, which you can see with this line. I'm going to pull up something different here. Okay, this shows, okay, this shows Graham Road, and this shows the easement, and the easement itself is approximately 30 feet. So if the proposed parking area was to come right up to that easement, that would solve two issues. One, it would keep them out of the easement so that nothing would get disturbed if the village decided to do something there. And it also gives, gives a special permit the proper setback, front yard setback from the road. So as long as it's not being built in this hash mark, it'll be all set. What I did do is, Frank Cross is not here, and I spoke with him last week to go over, you know, see if he sees anything that has to do or any problems he sees with engineering or stormwater. He told me he doesn't have any problem with this. He would suggest that, well, he would recommend that you grant the special permit, or actually don't hold back because of any engineering issues, but he is all for this. Now, I've also, well, something else here. I will go, actually, I'll go back to that. Okay, I have spoken with John Courtney also, because I know the topic of a sidewalk is going to be brought up. John has given me, I want to make sure you guys can see this.
A little complicated. Right here is Northeast Pediatrics, this section right here. Proposing, and this is with the plan for sidewalks on Dart Drive. I'm going to put my back in. Plans on Dart Drive and from Graham Road West. Village is going to put, over here is Trip Hammer Road. The village is going to put sidewalks across the street. This is Eric's Asian Restaurant. Put it across, have a crosswalk, and it's going to connect, we're going to take it all the way down to the property we own, and then connect on Ring Road. It goes all the way down to BJ's. In turn, we're also going to come from this four corners, and we're going to bring it all the way across to the beginning of the property line of Northeast Pediatrics.
I see people in the street all the time.
Can you say that one more time?
Bring water across when you say from the.
It was to be sidewalk only.
Oh, two sidewalks.
From the corner.
Yeah.
From the corner, from down here. So what I asked John was, I know the Satrie is going to come up with a special permit that, you know, we have sidewalk that you want to fix in because of that. I asked John, "What's your opinion on having a sidewalk put in front of Northeast Pediatrics?" And he goes, "It senses. There's no need for it, because if you bring it down here, it's going nowhere."
Well, not, but to the point that you first said, I thought.
This bank is too steep to have this sidewalk in here.
Right.
He goes, "It's absolutely useless."
So why don't we have a crosswalk that crosses?
That's for the Y, entrance to the Y.
The other, the other way. If you.
Here, right here.
Yep, if you have a crosswalk that connects this sidewalk that takes you to the Y over across here, people who are parking in the Y can get across safely. Because this sidewalk, if it goes, you know, that far.
Oh, I see.
It's okay, because you can park over here and then walk across. We're not worried about it.
Walking across, and then where do you go? You're walking through the parking lot.
Nope. You bring it all the way down, bring a little bit of sidewalk here, and then there's just a little piece that you cross across the parking lot to get into the building.
This grade in here is pretty steep in here.
There, right along. Right at the end.
Crosswalk there, they still don't need a sidewalk here, because it goes to nowhere.
No, but, no, the idea is connect, connect the Y parking.
If you come, if you come across it, what is the use of this sidewalk?
Because there are people who get off the road at Trip Hammer and come in, and there are people who park up that Y.
Not only, not only that.
Covered by, when you said, okay, I find it hard to see on this thing, but, so if we're looking at this one, come in from Trip Hammer, and you're saying it goes to the first entrance only of.
The property line is on this side of the first entrance of Northeast Pediatrics. Property line is about right here.
Okay. So, this one seems to show. Oh, this is the other organization, isn't it?
I mean, we can get back on the sidewalks here in a minute. I just kind of wanted to explain what John Courtney had said and what Frank Cross had said.
Right. So we'll talk about that, okay.
We also, Hope has provided us with a short EAF, which you can review tonight. I wouldn't suggest going to part two or part three. I believe tonight you probably ought to come up with questions and any other information that you're looking for, so then hopefully try to provide that for the next meeting.
Yeah, it was a little less than a minute, I would say, for us to absorb some of this.
We covered just about everything that.
Yeah, except for, I mean, the parking, we have to pay for parking spaces at the Y for our, for our employees to park it. Right now, we only have six spaces over there. And like I said, you know, like you said, the crosswalk there, it's like kind of forever.
Yeah.
I mean, that whole area, but that's, that's future stuff. I mean, I'm good at it, but I don't enjoy it.
And honestly, it's on the village to make sure that our roads are safe. And safe for pedestrians, for cyclists, for vehicles, and for transit. So my thought would be, let's make sure that you get the spaces that you need, because that makes a lot of sense to just put them right there. That's a really good spot for them. But let's also make sure that anybody who's not driving, to know if he's Pediatrics and their private vehicle, can get, or if they are and they're parking somewhere else, can get to you safely. Because the bus, when the bus stops right there, at that way.
One more thing, I believe, I believe you spoke with John Courtney about a crosswalk.
Yes.
And John said, "No way, because this crosswalk would not, any crosswalk in here is, it's not in a corner." You don't, you don't tend to put a crosswalk in the middle of the road, because people don't stop.
They don't, and I was worried about that, but I was going to say, there is a bus stop there.
There is a bus stop right there.
Right there.
I take that bus all the time.
Messenger.
Quit beating them up, no. The bus does stop there, and I've seen lots of people get off that bus. I've seen a lot of people waiting, I'm sure.
I, I take that bus all the time. I take, I take the bus from downtown there on a regular basis, so you know, four days a week.
But I'm also glad to hear that it's going to be on this side, too, because I see all these families with strollers coming from that corner, and it just gives me the willies every time. I just think, oh, my gosh, I'm just waiting for something bad to happen.
So, so I can see why you were saying that putting a sidewalk all the way across doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense, because it doesn't connect to anything. But you were saying, take the sidewalk just to the edge of their property line?
The village is going to be pushing to the edge.
Just to the first entrance.
Basically stop right where this first ingress and egress is.
And so we're, we're talking about maybe considering to the second. It's what, in a way, maybe, okay, but we'll see.
I, I think the, I don't know if there's a benefit to that, except unless we want to put a crosswalk.
Well, yeah, that's the issue.
And I, and I think we need to consider as, like, part of our villages, how do we make that space safe for everybody who's either driving or walking? It might be that there's, you know, a table and then a crosswalk.
Any questions as far as information, anything on that?
Not at this cost, but we have to go. Okay, so I was going to say, one of the things in looking at this, though, you didn't consider putting more spots behind the building?
It tends to be very wet back there.
Is that because it's close to the wetlands and it's soggy?
Yeah, it is really close. We've turned our backyard into an outdoor waiting area. We've turned it into a very welcoming space for employees and patients. We can finish out that flowers garden, you know, but it is, it is wet.
Okay, I was just wondering, because it, you know.
I know.
There's all this. And I know that water has always been an issue.
Yes, yeah, so I did have an engineer, and he checked our building, talked to them about that there, and he said, "It's, it's pretty wet."
Okay, and are, do you have solar panels on your roof?
Yes, we do.
Look at that. I never knew.
Yeah.
That's great. I'm looking this time, thinking, look at that. I can't tell.
Perfect example of law.
I've done right, right?
What about extending to the east, or wait, to the south, I guess, the eastern parking lot, like?
That, you'd be careful, because I know there's a stream back there.
Now, they're out, they're surrounded by.
Looks like it also might be a hill.
It's, it's pretty steep, it's pretty steep back here.
Yes, so if you're looking at the parking space that goes like towards Doofy, you can see there's a very white area there. It's rock, it's a very steep embankment, and for the past seven, maybe almost eight years now, I think since they redid Trip Hammer Road, it could have been longer time, that area has lost down there. So it would be really difficult to put.
That's correct.
A dry, a dry rock in there that takes in any floodwater, so we wouldn't be able to add spaces.
So there's a stream over here.
I mean, I've seen your parking lot at busy times before, and I always wonder, oh, my God. And people are usually parked right where you're going to put your new spots.
Yeah.
People are parked sideways. Yeah, it's crazy.
Right. You thought about moving, there's a lot of space at the mall. Okay.
So you're going to have an answer.
Yes.
Hold on. There's basically four questions here. One, you'll have your sidewalks. Two, you'll have your trees. Three, are there any other information that you'd like Hope to provide to you? Any other information or questions? And four, your short EAF.
Okay.
So however you want to address those.
Have you asked about a tree inventory? It doesn't look like there's many trees on the lot currently.
Hope and I have spoken about that, and she, I won't speak for you, but you said you'd be prepared to.
Absolutely. We've been putting trees in, like, we had to replace the two trees at the end of the parking lot last year, because they died. So we put some semi-mature trees in. But that's, I mean, our goal is to make that kind of almost like a park field. You know, it's Pediatrics that should be happy.
What a widdle in there.
Um.
The water.
Yeah, and it helps with the water, when maybe a few willows.
It really does.
Yeah, well, I was just saying.
It really would help.
Yeah.
It would, it would keep a lot of that water.
Yeah, and there's space out back for probably two trees that will go up, and then I want to do a little hammer area at the map. It's enough away from the lines that our, our grounds guys said that we need to put a tree there.
Yeah, the only thing is that, but the tree law, you'd need a lot of trees, a lot of trees. It's 30 trees per acre.
30 units.
30 units per acre.
Shrubs count.
Shrubs can count, like, it's, there's a.
We have shrubs. An existing trees count.
An existing, yeah, so at 1.57 acres, that means you need 47.1 units worth of tree. And that means like a combination of trees and shrubs, whatever you already have, and will, whatever the difference is, you'd have to put in.
Yep, I'd word tree bank.
Or tree bank.
Yes, tree bank, that's other things. And now we are not supposed to transform at all.
Fantastic. It'll really help with your water issue, too.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I suggest if you can get us a tree inventory, and I'll, and I'll go over with you.
Okay.
I'll get you the size, the units and whatnot, and go over all that. Is that okay?
Yes.
So that's tree piece.
That's the tree piece.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalks piece, those are the two biggies, really. As long as these are, you know, Brent has the size of them and everything. I will say, I so appreciate lately when I go to Pittsburgh, having made them too skinny, because our cars are bigger, a lot of them. And so the size of these eight.
Could be in the range of a nine by 20.
Okay. Now, there were some things, oh, we're going to go through the EAF, right?
Yeah.
So the sidewalk, you can't waive that requirement. We added that, that's in the sidewalk law that can be waived.
So we can have it.
We have to worry about street trees.
Yes, we do.
When it comes to the side, we have to worry about.
There are two or three.
There's already trees.
They're in the easement.
Yep, there's three here, and then two over in that place.
Very good side streets.
Yeah. We probably made that requirement, that's close to it, good.
Yeah, plus a huge pine tree, there's a huge pine tree.
When was this building there? They put that in your letter, what did you say?
That the. Been there since 1964.
Has it, oh, really? That long?
Oh, that's where they were? Why did, I, I thought that they used to be at Community Corners, but I guess not.
Probably maybe Mr. Dr. Myers before he came over to here.
Ah. Wow.
Any questions, thoughts, comments about sidewalks?
No.
Well, do you want them in front of this building, or you?
Are you going to be stopping down, stopping at the property line as it comes down?
So I assume people get off at Trip Hammer and walk down, and then if they're going to the P, which is what, if they're on the side of the road, likely they are.
Yes, they would come here, otherwise.
The driveway. Otherwise, they can cross up at Trip Hammer and walk down.
You know, the thing is, when I drive here, I find a couple of issues. This has a stop sign, and this has a stop sign, so that's a straight.
It doesn't have one up here, though.
No, it doesn't. It's a straight shot coming in, but not coming out. Same thing down by Target, which is really strange. You come from BJ's.
There's a stop sign.
And I will admit that every, about once a year or twice a year, I forget, I'm somewhere else, and I stop halfway, because it's like, whoa, and I just, some of it doesn't make sense to me. I don't know whether, if there were a stop sign here, would that make a difference?
I feel like that would be such a terrible question.
It's an interesting, it's an interesting place to try to put a stop sign, because there's a straight through and there's a left turn also.
And there's a turn, and there's an immediate turn right here.
Given that, I just think people are going to go blowing through there.
I don't think this crosswalk is going to stop anybody.
I don't either, no, it's not.
I think one of the things that you can do is if you add haptics, people do stop.
Have what?
Like, so, so where the road does something different, so when you can feel the difference when you're driving. So one of the ways that, that we often handle that is we do something called a table intersection. So it's just, there's no necessarily like a stop sign or a stoplight, but there is a raised level.
Surface, or there's bricks or something, yeah.
Well, it's, it's a raised level, it's usually only a couple of inches, enough that your car feels like, okay, I'm doing something different right now. And usually, there's some sort of, you know, crosswalk with that, and that's normally enough to make people feel like, oh, I need to do something different.
I don't know where they would do that here. Usually, right, it's at the intersection, right? Like, you go downtown, sure enough, the intersection is raised, you do feel that. I know that we've asked Brent and John about some of these things before, too, and they have cited, you know, some, some state law laws where you can't, you can't, right? Well, yeah, but even beyond that, you can't just, there were certain things, because we, we thought about it someplace else, and it was like, no, you can't just put that in the middle of a road anywhere you want it to go.
Well, it depends, okay, so it depends on what the road is and, and whether there's a state road or what level road it is next to it. So one of the issues with this would be coming from Trip Hammer Road, there's a certain distance of car loading.
Oh, right.
So, and, and it looks like there's.
After changes and all, yeah.
I would think there's plenty of distance there, but we'd have to look and see what the regulations are for car loading, because you don't want a situation where, where people get backed up so that people are, you know, their cars are waiting over a crosswalk. And the same thing, you don't want something that's going to, when come on, people are coming down Graham Road, have to stop, and then have the risk of having cars behind them, not be able to turn from Graham Road, from Trip Hammer. However, that is a long distance, a very long distance, and my, my gut is that even half that distance would be enough to handle loading from Trip Hammer?
I'm just worried that they're going to be going faster, people just.
That's a heavily.
My concern is that, I know it's an expense for the Pediatrics, but if the staff has to go to the Y, at least you don't go back and forth like parents might several times with kids as much, right? It would be just staff coming that.
Well, we know it's mostly staff that parks over here. It's the.
So you, you probably make it morning, maybe lunch, and evening.
And it's dark, and it's dark.
And it's dark, yeah. And then anybody coming on the bus would have to do that same thing as well.
Right, the bus, I'm worried, it's, the bus thing is kind of the problem, a lot of it.
Have you talked about getting a stop on the other side?
Stop on the other side?
A stop, to stop right in front of, when the bus.
Being getting the buses to change or stop?
Well, they, they say, they can come back, and then goes to the mall, right? They don't, they don't come back, they wouldn't be able to stop the other side. They turn onto Graham from Trip Hammer, they go into the Y, they come out and they stop at that corner right down here, and then they turn onto the mall road here, and then they go.
Of Target in front of, in front of where the new KU Metta is, they stopped there, when it was Fonton, they stopped there.
It's, it's the next one.
Next one down.
No, but she says stop here. Leave the mall area. And they go, they go right, like, past, onto Trip Hammer in the other direction, so they do not come this way.
So they come, you're saying they come from here and go down, and then go that way? Okay.
Right, so there, there isn't a spot where the bus would stop that would be on the side as Pediatrics. So I think we need to kind of like puzzle through, how do we make it safe?
So let me ask this question, because I want to focus on the sidewalk. So regardless of if we put a tabletop or a, does that, does that change your decision about where a sidewalk would go for this specific ask?
Yes, it actually does, because you want the sidewalk to connect to the crosswalk, and if the crosswalk, you know, is on this side, then you'd want the sidewalk to connect there, because somebody would want to, you know, be able to do this and cross and get to the bus. If, if it's on, if it's on this side, you know, then you'd want the people to connect there. And the other thing, too, is I would ask, if you've got people who are walking from somewhere outside of your property to your door, how do they get from outside of the property line to the front door without having to, like, manage getting through a parking lot? Like, is there a safe pedestrian way to get from, like, a sidewalk to the door?
This sounds more like a crosswalk issue than a sidewalk issue. If, if you have, and I'm only going from what I've heard from John, he's not in favor of anything going across here, because you're in the middle of this road. The only place he would be in favor of it would be down here where the stop signs are, except you come down here, this is too steep for a sidewalk. It's hard to be 88s.
Yeah.
So in here, a sidewalk, it doesn't make any sense, sidewalk to nowhere, unless, I mean, if.
Unless, I mean, if a bus is going to come down and drop people off, you can drop them off in either one of these entries. But I can say, I, I don't see why a sidewalk here would be necessary. It's completely up to you. I don't have a dog in the race. Becomes a sidewalk, I don't really see a reason to have one here. Try to get a crosswalk somewhere in here, but you're going to be, probably going to be fighting John about it.
It's, it's a really challenging.
Yeah, it is. It's dangerous. Do you have any sense of how many people come to you from the bus?
The bus? No. I mean, if I had to guess, maybe three, maybe three a day.
That's right.
Yeah, maybe, maybe three a day.
So most people do drive to you?
Yes.
Or? Does, does the bus stop on Trip Hammer at all so that they could get out and walk down?
It does, but a lot further away. It stops in front of the key bank.
They can come from this corner and walk down.
It, it stops in front of the old key bank.
Yeah, but then they'd still have to walk all the way down.
Why can't it stop at the corner of this and Trip Hammer?
Not where their routes are set up.
Yeah.
Golly, change comes hard.
Well, so, so that, that key bank spot is the closest spot where they can stop versus people who are going into the other shopping area.
Quasars, and there's the crosswalks and the lights there and everything.
And so you have a dangerous.
I can charge you a bus route for the next meeting if you want, or send you one, I can find out where they stop and they.
It would be helpful, I guess, just even for future.
I can mark it on a map for you. I ta, I mean, I literally take that bus three days a week.
Okay, so you, you probably know how many people come.
Well, I always, I don't miss, well, I take it after work, so you guys are closed by then. But one of the things I really want to think about when we're thinking about this is not just like, how many people use it now, but, but there's, there's a, Tompkins County in general has, you know, some real densification happening. And this is one of the nodes where they're saying that we should think about our density. Because you've got access to work, you've got access to transit, you've got access to grocery stores and medical and all that kind of stuff. So this is kind of a place where they want to see more densification. With more densification, you have more people walking and biking and taking their kids in a stroller. So to say, do we need it today? Maybe we do, maybe we don't. Are we going to need it in 10 years? Probably. 20 years? Probably. 30 years? Definitely. So if we're looking at kind of a long-term goal versus the short-term goal, we look at it a little differently.
But I guess my, well, I'm, I'm just really worried about the danger of a crosswalk here. And no question, I want the sidewalk on the, on the north side, and I want the one up to their first drive.
Absolutely.
And the village is doing that.
Yeah, that goes without saying. I mean, that's happening. But I don't want anything to happen to this other spot in case we need to add a sidewalk.
So village easements, the spots aren't in there.
Right.
Right, so I don't know, I don't want to stop them from getting their parking now.
No, I would not stop people.
Or do I think that their special permit would have any connection to a crosswalk in the Village Road?
Right, I was going to say, I think it's something we have to really.
That's not a condition of their special permit.
Yeah, because who knows in the future what's going to happen with?
The Chinese restaurant.
The Chinese restaurant.
Have you spoken to Mr. Getzman about parking there?
That's no fun, too.
Oh, yes. Yeah, we're sharing your pleasure.
We were parking there for a while, and we were told, or asked to not prepare for liability reasons, and we offered to pay for parking, which was a nay. And then, I mean, months trying to buy the, you know, I didn't let us down the road, there's people parking there. And from what rumor has it is that.
From the vets. It's cloning, it's cloning.
Yeah.
Seen them, like.
Yeah, some have seen them.
Who's parking there?
Cloning, that.
People let down, they'll vet.
Yeah, the staff parks there.
Oh.
So at the end of the day, it's no fun to have to pay for concrete, whether you're renting it or putting it in your.
Right.
We don't want to have to pay for that, but we, there's a need for the patients and a need for staff, and if we have this, we can make it work, works for you, and that would be, would be great.
Yeah, the, the only thing I would ask is, let's assume that there's no other parking, other sidewalk going in anywhere around here. I would just say, like, so our, our village will go up to the property line here. So it always, I always find it odd when a sidewalk just ends. Because then it's a little bit of a weird thing. So I would say, imagine, so what happens when someone's walking there? They step off the, the Village sidewalk, and then how do they get to your office?
Yeah.
I was, I was going to ask whether you plan to put a sidewalk along that.
Yeah.
On the east side.
Or, yeah, because there's, there's, it doesn't, it doesn't look like it's a lot, there's just like a little bit of space that goes to the drive, that's between the Village Line and driveway.
It's two cars can pull in and out of that, the driveways, both of them, actually. And it's, and most people actually come in through the second driveway. I've never seen anybody walk.
I think she's referring to the green space between the actual property line and the driveway.
Yeah, it looks like a little stub of sidewalk there.
People walk to the mall, they step, they walk through there, they spark on the road.
Right, so, so the deal is, you know, I'd like to know that, it looks like our, the Village prop, the Village Line ends, and there's maybe like eight feet.
Can I see what you're?
Yeah.
She's talking about the, just the little corner piece.
No, I was wondering how they could get into here.
Yeah, so.
Make sure you don't want to.
The sidewalk comes.
So the Village Line ends right there, and then there's just like this little bit of grass here.
Where it comes here?
Two.
Yes.
Not, not the problem. So we're, we're going to go sidewalk all the way down here and then stop. And then if I want to get from the sidewalk, it's.
Well, I don't think that's eight feet.
To the driveway, there could be a little bit of land.
You're saying, you're saying.
Just a long sidewalk, onto like a.
She's saying, just put it right here.
Exactly, yeah.
Just like extend it to the, to where the driveway is.
Okay. That has a guide, has a guide board.
If you're like, if you don't have accessibility issues.
It says there's a pole.
Yes.
There's a pole there?
There's a guideline that comes.
That's why.
Is it like a telephone pole?
I'll show.
Yeah.
No, what'll have to happen, and I'm not, like I said, I'm not going to speak for John, but what, what'll have to happen, there'll have to be some type.
Oh, look, there it is, great.
Yeah.
There's going to have to be some type of agreement between, you see the stake, you see the property line stake? Okay, from there to the actual driveway.
Right.
There had to be some type of, other type of easement or something there, so that we were able to put sidewalk to that point. Because John was talking about running it to the actual driveway.
Yeah, that's what I want to see. I don't want there to be this like orphaned space.
It's just.
Because it's not going to be within the easement area or something. Okay.
Oh, no, that makes, I was wondering how they're going to get to the driveway, or even have a sidewalk along the driveway. Because you know, what drives me crazy is every time I go through Lansing Trails, and I see that, what, eight-foot space between Lansing Trails and Beaumont, there's that where it's not joined, drives me crazy. And I just.
Drives me crazy.
Drops off, drops off, big gap, goes from concrete to asphalt.
Right.
And I just think.
Yeah, and I think from the planning.
This or didn't.
And I think, like, on, on our job on the planning board is make sure we make those connections.
Yeah, let's not do that again.
Let's not do that again, is my, I try to learn from my mistakes.
Okay.
All right, well, I'm, I'm in favor of giving you eight, whatever we do, but we've got to deal with it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And so Natalie had a suggestion, what was it, just make sure?
To have as a condition, a grant of an easement to connect the sidewalk from the thin ice parcel to the parking lot, however John designs that.
The thin ice with the doofy ass?
Yes.
Okay.
That's their entity.
So that will give us what we need in order to.
Connect to that.
Connect the sidewalk to the driveway.
That makes me so happy.
That's our goal.
Thank you.
So that's then the sidewalks and trees. Other questions? I know we already asked a whole bunch of questions, so I don't know if anybody has any other questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm going to just, can I show you some, may I approach the panel?
Of course.
I just want to make sure that I'm looking at, if you guys are looking at on this, the easement.
So this is, this is my great photography. So this is where Doofy's driveway is in, and this is our first driveway here.
This is your first driveway.
Yep.
Can I draw on this?
Yes.
So you're, you're going to have some space, so you're going to have like a sidewalk in this part. We'd have to contact, see if this guidebook.
Oh, it's a nice guidebook.
Okay.
So what we would need is, our property line is.
It's not so hard, maybe that's my wire.
It would be a pain, but.
No wire.
Wire could be going the other direction.
Yes.
It depends on.
It depends.
Now, you'll be hearing probably the Natalie.
Yeah, if you get like this, two guy wires in the other direction, like, could replace the one going that way.
Down or over.
Okay. Thank you.
So where is the light, so, is that on the pole?
It's at pole.
It's on this pole right here.
Who owns the?
We don't know.
He's going to find out.
Yeah.
They're right along with the dark drive sidewalk.
Your property.
West End, you know, if they had issues here or there, you know.
I have a ladder.
Yeah. I'd, I'd have to find out more from John already. He's got a little, he's scheduled with us. And then, so we do have the application, we also do have the short EAF if people want to.
There were some questions.
Go over it. So we can, yeah, we can just go over the short EAF, if folks are okay with that, I assume. I'll skip over all the stuff, stuff at the top, but I don't have to read all this. If people have a specific question about one of them, how about, how about you just rattle it off? That way you don't have to sit and listen to me read all these things, yeah. Number five, I didn't have an answer put in there.
Five?
Whether.
Are there two fives?
There's a 5B.
Oh, okay.
Yes, five.
It says four.
Five.
Yeah.
Four, five, I know, do you believe that?
Yes.
It, yeah, B, B was open about whether it's consistent with the adopted.
I'm thinking not.
Yeah, I think it's NA, sort of.
Yeah, you're looking for.
Walkability.
Walkability, but they're, they're adding spaces, it really doesn't do anything with your walkability. And the wasn't really, the walkability is being addressed by us putting the sidewalk in on the other side, for sure.
And, and the question that we kind of opened is, depending on how we want to handle some of the, like, bus crossing area, if it makes sense to have more sidewalk, but, but that's, that's kind of an open question until we can figure out what we're doing.
So it was NA, right?
I would say NA, because that's not really applicable. Oh, one of them to do is, there's only one in here, one question.
There was, actually, there were, when I went.
Well, if there's any changes, I'd ask, I'll make the changes, and I'll just, if you're okay with that, I'll have you sign it again at the bottom.
Absolutely.
There's one other I thought left out, oh, it was, I guess 13? Does any portion of the site, I know that it does join some wetlands or water bodies or something. You said yes. Would it?
But it's not going to encroach, that's usually, that's on the backside of the.
If yes, identify, and it's like not applicable?
I think if.
That's always confusing to me.
I think if B is yes, that's the yes for B, not the yes for A.
Wouldn't it be nice if it said if B is yes?
Well, you know, I, I do have a question with that. So it says, so is that, is that a wetland that's regulated?
No, I don't think it is. I think that probably was created when they built.
Okay, so then, then the answer would be no, not yes for that one, for, for 13A.
Contain wetlands or other regulated by a federal, state, or local agency. Oh, you're, good point.
Yeah, I don't think it's a.
Thanks.
Well, if any other water body is a stream back there, then it'll be regulated.
It is regulated.
So it is regulated.
It's regulated by us.
That one down by the lower lot.
So yes is appropriate, okay?
As a perennial.
Would it encroach no? And if yes, identify the wetlander and extent of alterations. So you just say stream, but not altered or something, do you, okay.
Correct.
Yeah, the only, the only way that that would be altered or encroached upon at all is if they put some trees near there, which would actually be welcome, so I don't think that's an issue at all.
Okay, the other one was number 14, identify the typical habitat types. Let it blank. So I guess we would call it suburban.
Suburban.
Suburban, right? I understand why you left it out, because I have a heck of a time with forms.
I had suburban, but then I was like, no.
Well, maybe not, maybe not, I know, this is my problem, too.
We agree with you.
I totally understand, I, it's terrible.
This is in the board's opinion.
Suburban.
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 Are we unanimous about that? Okay. Is everything else, I think? Okay, no, those were the only things I think I noticed when I was going. Let's hope not.
It was decided on this one.
What is that, Tom?
Five, five. Five B.
Uh, not a little.
That makes the most sense.
Any other comments or questions? So, like we mentioned, I definitely did in the beginning, but we always keep public hearings open for two meetings, so no decision tonight, but, and we need the tree stuff anyway, so, and I don't know if you want to chat with John about any of the questions of the questions or comments or thoughts that people are.
I think about some of the things that were said here, maybe he has some type of solution or at least some reasoning why he doesn't want it to happen. Maybe PPW state regulations, who knows? Can't have one of certain ways from, I don't know.
Yeah, no, it, it, there is, it's like there's a certain distance, but, you know, the one that I know that hit the minimum distance is turning from 13 onto Willow, Willow and Day. And that's actually a much shorter distance than here. And that's, that is, that was, that squeaked through.
Oh, that doesn't stop me at all.
What's that?
That doesn't stop me at all. What is this?
It's you're turning, coming down the hill and then you turn like after the, I don't, I just have a little work.
Um, when you're coming down Route 13 and, um, the, the first, the Willow and Day, the first stoplight there, um, so there is a table intersection, um, just on the other side, uh, where Willow and Day are, um, and that one, yeah, and that, that's basically the minimum distance. That just barely squeaked in.
Okay. And I just want to reiterate that that would not be.
Oh, yeah, no, that wouldn't be part of, yeah.
No, that would be us.
Yeah.
I was somewhere recently. It reminds me of what you were talking about. As I look at the picture and there's a telephone pole there and there's a guideline, I was somewhere recently, I don't remember where it was, but that did not stop them from, um, putting in a walkway and it just, no joke, it goes right around the pole, right? I'm like, you can't fit on either side. There's a wire that was like, wow, they put that sidewalk right through.
Yeah.
With the guy wire there?
Oh, and the telephone pole, yeah. Yeah, the telephone pole is just surrounded by asphalt, great.
Yeah.
I was like, wow. Here, I'm pretty sure.
Oh, good. So if you're gonna talk to John about that, I mean, I, I understand it's not an ideal situation at all, um, but I think one of the things we have to think about is let's, let's think about it from the point of view of somebody walking with, um, you know, a mobility issue or a stroller coming off that bus and think about how that crossing works for that person. And if we can make a crossing that works for somebody with a mobility issue or with a stroller, then we know that it'll work for everybody.
Yep.
Gosh, I just don't trust drivers if you want to.
I don't trust drivers either, but here's the thing.
People, they're not getting stopped for a bump or.
No, but, but it's, it's our job to think about the health, safety, and welfare and just to say, well, people are gonna hit them anyway, doesn't mean that we can't do our best to do something to make sure that it's easier for people to get across.
That makes sense. People with motorbikes too, right?
Yeah, doesn't mean we don't do life.
I also don't want it to be a set, a setup where it makes it more dangerous for cars where people are slamming on brakes or trying to come down quickly for a bump. So that's what I'm gonna talk about with John.
Up with a way to mitigate whatever we can.
Yeah.
Then wherever you put it, depending on what the rules of the state are, you don't want to be open up for liability. We put one there, somebody walked there, somebody gets hit, well, hey, there's a crosswalk right in the village put there. You're responsible for me getting hit, could you put a crosswalk there? So that's some of the things.
Is that, is that true?
I, I don't, I don't know if that would.
I don't, look, I mean, you can literally sue for anything nowadays anyways.
I would be like, yes, you can sue.
But, but I would, I would say, I would say frankly.
Poorly placed sidewalk. Crosswalk might open up.
Yeah, you're right. If it doesn't make sense.
A poorly placed sidewalk. But there would be, there would be signs, warnings, that there's a crosswalk ahead.
Sure. I mean, and there's, there's also the ones where it's a pedestrian signal controlled, so.
The button and it flashes yellow.
I know, but.
One of the things I.
They have those all over Canandaigua and people are getting rear ended left and right because of them on their brakes.
I know that the one, the intersection I found, one Keugamaw going over to the other side with the mobile gas stations. And what, I mean, when you're coming out of Keugamaw, you get focused on whether there's coming and then there's a person walking here as you start to turn. And I mean, then a couple of times where it was, now in Massachusetts, what they used to do is they had a four-way walk. There was a red, yellow, which meant everybody on all sides stopped while people crossed.
And green and Cuban.
Yep. And I think that that makes way more sense or somebody's gonna get hurt and I just keep waiting for it, but it's like, yeah, it's, it's tough. People are just such different drivers now.
It, it's true. And we are densifying.
Yes.
And so as we have more and more people walking, we have to think about.
We have to have a raised.
We have to think.
An elevator up over.
Or a tunnel, maybe. You can do a tunnel.
Um, what an idea, yeah, oh, yeah, a tunnel would be just, no, yeah. Underwater. Um, but yeah, so I'll, I'll be in touch with you and, uh, the next meeting, uh, hopefully we have everything we need to make a decision for you. And you are welcome to stay to listen to, uh, our trustee report and other business if you would like to, however you do not have.
They can get out of it. You guys, you guys have the bronco?
We'll give you a second.
Jim might have gotten it too close and then.
Oh, by all means.
She won't be a moment. I had, he was one of the, somebody got, and I had to go in from the other side and it was not, it didn't work. And it's not so easy.
I've had to put the car seat in. From the other side because I couldn't get the car seat out of the back door.
There's these two spots at the last.
He's all right.
That, uh, it's. Side break area because there's a stairwell that comes up, so I always pull in there because I was like, I'm not gonna have a problem getting in and out of my truck.
Nope.
And I can either pull into one or I can back into the other one and I'll, I'm like, there we go. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is the trustee report. Lisa and I were both at the trustee meeting to talk about, um, the, uh, trustees discussion of solar law, so.
Well, first of all, um, the first thing they talked about, which is something I hadn't been aware that did happen is there was a, a fire in one of the, um, Uptown Road building, number 12, part of the Gaslight Village.
Yeah, yeah.
And six fam, six units were destroyed or.
Impacted at least, yeah.
impacted and because there's asbestos in them, it's, they basically were able to relocate all of those six families or people, but they just got basically out of their place and could not go back. And so it was a pretty interesting discussion. I mean, they seemed to be working well together with, um, Mr. Kennedy, the, the regional manager there, but, um, you know, there's just a lot of issues. People just keep wanting to get their things in and some of them have documentation issues because they're, there are some that might be from.
Family heirlooms, things like that.
Yeah, but also like the documentation because they might be from another country or whatever. That's a real issue. So that was kind of interesting. And it sounds like they're kind of moving along though, or coming to the end of some of the things so that maybe some of that stuff will be resolved, but I had no idea that that had happened.
Yeah, I hadn't heard about that either.
And you don't really see it when you're driving by. You can't see because I went over there to look and I couldn't really.
You only really notice it if you're going, I still get my directions mixed up. If you're going east, kind of up, uptown road, like you go past the Chevy Dior and then the Nissan Dior, and then you can kind of see a couple boarded up windows, but if you're coming the other way, you don't notice it.
Yes.
Because I had heard about the fire there and, and I saw the agenda about apparently it was boarded up and I thought, so I actually went back in there to drive through the parking lot to find it. I couldn't, I couldn't really tell except I saw one door that had a uninhabitable or unsafe on it.
So I guess it was started with a candle is what they said, one of the tenants, so just a little less in there to be careful. Yep.
So what did they decide? Are they gonna tear it down?
No. Kind of remediate.
Yeah.
But no one can get in until it's stabilized.
So it's structurally unsound or you said there's asbestos exposure?
We don't know that yet.
We don't know that yet.
We should know there's asbestos.
What's that?
Just asbestos is the main issue. They're not letting people back in there.
Well, that'd be terrible if you were wrestling dirt and you have all your stuffs there.
Well, that's, but that was, they had a couple of people speak up on that. Of course, it's very disturbing and upsetting.
I've lived there in the late seventies.
So that was.
There was asbestos there.
And that's, they were a big, a large part of the meeting, I would, I will say. So then we did get on to, um, there was another discussion about, uh, Mona Lita Smiley from Tompkins County Community Justice Center. They have received a grant to, um, set up kind of little hubs periodically in, in various places, um, to help people who are underserved and maybe underprivileged to have access, help them access services and resources. And it was, she was doing a, a presentation to the trustees as to whether it was rural areas. Um, and Carolyn Greenwell said, well, this isn't really a rural area, but we are really not city either for that matter, and we certainly have our share of people who are, are not wealthy. So, um, that was the other thing that was talked about, where might it be appropriate to put this? They just come a couple of hours every, I don't know, week, was it?
Yeah, she, she kind of has like office hours, she said, and a couple other places. Caroline, she like brings materials about services in the county and a laptop and she's got a phone and a printer and like if somebody needs to, I need to schedule this thing, they can use the laptop to, it's a, it's a.
It sounded like a really helpful sort of thing, so it's, I don't know, but so nothing was made decision. There was this consider the amendment of rental equipment. I didn't quite understand the whole gist of that, that has to do with Bellis area.
Didn't even come through me. T G Miller kind of added that.
So I don't know. And then we moved on to the solar law. Well, I don't even quite know what to say, but it wasn't exactly well received from my Carolyn Greenwell kept saying, why can't it be made simpler? Didn't want decommissioning, didn't want a lot of things. Wolfgang Bulmer was very, um, one, didn't understand the definitions and didn't think they were appropriate. Drew Riedel felt it was bureaucratic and Bulmer also said, we, this is a technical issue, not aesthetics, when it came to, you know, some of the buffering issues. So I had said, I'm not sure everybody's really had a chance to read this thoroughly, um, because I'm not sure they were getting the gist of what our thought process was, but at any rate, um, we were there for quite some time. I think, I don't know what else there is to say. Maybe Susan would have something more.
No, I think there were a couple of things that they were gonna focus on too, you know, there was.
So Ronnie assigned some chores to everybody to check, you take care of some definitions, you go and look at this and, so they were gonna discuss it at this coming, or their staff meeting that they held in the Thursday, whether it's this Thursday or next Thursday, I forget. So we'll be hearing more, but I think from my perspective, if you want to keep it simple, just don't have a code. But I feel very strongly that, um, I mentioned, I said, I think decommissioning is just vital. I mean.
Yeah, there was quite a bit of discussion about that, especially as, as it pertained to, um, you know, again, and I don't think any of us want us, want it to be bureaucratic anyway. I don't think any of us said, oh, we should make this hard and, you know, arduous and we'll put this thing in there. But, you know, we, we did try to clarify a few times, the decommissioning plan isn't always required. And I, I think a lot of it was, I don't know if people had, had a chance to fully read. We also have the upper hand and we've talked about this so many times that even if you do read it, it's not necessarily clear until you read it like, you know, 18 times. But like, you know, the decommissioning plan is, you know, if it's for tier one, that's at Mike's discretion. Right? It doesn't have to be in there. But, and I, and I made the point too, um, that right, you know, not having the, because there was some discussion about, do we even need it? And I did make the point about how many times we've not had something that's been there and everyone has the examples in this room, that it's come back to bite the village. So have the protection in there and use it sparingly, but it's there if you need it.
I was gonna say, I think it's really, we've learned some lessons from some, dealing with some of the contractors here, that you need to have the code to enforce. If you don't have it, it's just, you know, a free for all and people will take advantage of it. So whatever's important to us, I feel pretty strongly about most everything that we put in there. I did not think it was burdensome because most of the, once the application is filled. By the way, I did however, um, ask whether, second, it wasn't at the meeting, but I, I called our mayor and I said, by the way, did you guys get the application? And they did not. So I did forward that to them because I said, I think, you know, that's gonna be filled out by the people that are gonna be building this or what, and I think that's, you know, it's, it takes a lot of bureaucracy away from, but I might feel that then there was something about the cost of these permits all, and I said, you know, anybody that can afford to do solar does, can afford another couple hundred dollars for a permit and our staff has to monitor this stuff. I just think that we are, if we don't start valuing time of our staff and valuing aesthetics in our village, I really don't see the point in having a planning board, frankly.
I think in the aesthetic piece, you know, we, we tried to, there were some other comments too, and we, you know, tried to, right, here's the code. I want to do solar. Okay, you want to do solar. There are the rules to do solar. That's what you follow. There were some other comments about some other things too that we, that are valuable for the village. Where should they live? Shouldn't be in the solar light, should be in, you know, some new promotional thing we do or it should be in the comp plan or it should be. So, um, we did try to type it. There were, it was, it was a good discussion.
I suggested that maybe we needed to have a meeting with them so they could understand the thought process we went through. I really feel that going forward, when we have a new code that we are proposing to them, that what we really should do is have a policy that the chair and perhaps another person always, and does a slight presentation just to give it context. I think we really did not do that well.
Yeah, we didn't.
And I think that was half of the problem because I, I don't think that, I, I think Susan is one of the few people, she's been with us through this whole thing.
She's also written 18 times.
Yes, she has been knowing how much, you know, waffling we done and found, you know, we wanted to keep it simple. I tried to explain it. We wanted to keep it simple. We thought we had simplified it.
Oh, and we have.
Along comes Natalie back from her leave and she says, this is very confusing and that's because we made it so simple that it didn't make sense. And I said, I really feel that if you don't repeat some of the language in each of the tiers, people are just gonna go to the tier they want. They're not gonna look at anything else. You want to be sure that it's all there so they can't say, well, I didn't see it there and blah, blah, blah.
Well, and I think it was, right, repeating something doesn't impact how simple it is. That just makes it shorter or longer. So I think that we did a good job keeping it simple and if you have to repeat something somewhere, that's fine, it's still just as simple.
I think repeating things can make it simple.
Right. And there's a lot of, right, there's a lot of places that we took the stuff out because it just didn't make sense too. But especially when you're talking about some of those tier things, like, that's the big thing. They want to know, right, they're gonna fill out this permit.
And they're only.
Application, sorry. And then the next big thing is, okay, here's what I want to do is that tier one, two, or three.
Right. And then they're gonna go there and that's all they're gonna look at.
And I think you're right. If they had looked at the application first and then said, oh, okay, so I filled this out and now I didn't understand, I have to read either tier one or tier two or tier three, they probably would have received it differently.
I think, yeah, so I think a lot of this was, we did not present it appropriately. So I'm hoping that we can regroup and because I, I, I really don't know how much simpler we could make it. Now, maybe you feel differently, but do you think we know, it's not length, it's simplicity? Is it? And we've got state regs too.
I'm kind of the wrong person to answer because I had to deal with the uniform code, which is.
He's like, yes, this thing's amazing.
But no, I, I think what you, what you did, you were able to get all the information. Um, okay, I'm tier two. This is what I need to do. And you're right, they're gonna look at tier two, they're not gonna read the whole thing. Nobody wants to read the whole thing. I'm not so, in defense of the board of trustees, there was, and you, you touched on this, there's just so much time and effort that you put into this that they don't see the travels.
Right.
They don't understand that you, what question they might have, you guys probably spent a day talking.
And came back to it six times.
It was a lot for them to take in. You know, you got four pages, five pages you're looking at going, holy cow, this is a lot. I mean, this is complicated. It isn't. It really isn't.
No, it isn't.
So other than Susan, I mean, who's, like I said, has been on the journey with us, it's, I think it's kind of a sticker shock, so to speak.
And I think it might be lost that tier two, when talking about a decommissioning plan, tier two encompasses residential and commercial. So I think to treat those two things as the same is a big mistake. And then if they were trying to get rid of a decommissioning plan.
Oh, then I think it's.
Then it should not, it should apply to commercial certainly. And we could discuss, you know, carving out residential if that's something they want to do, but I think that was lost on the board and then edits that I have seen.
Uh, you know, I, I think it was quite some time ago, but I went to, it was a park in the ocean, in Rhode Island, and it was like a postcard park area. There's a lighthouse, really pretty gorgeous, you know, I mean, it was gorgeous. And yet, right there, all spread out was this framework with deteriorating, broken down panels all over it. It had not been decommissioned. And I'll tell you, I just thought, how is this a lot? And that was 20 years ago. Surely we can do better than that. And you know that that will happen if we don't do some of that. It just will happen.
Right, and that's, and with, with everything that we've done, and that was my point is, I, I can't think of a situation where, you know, they asked a question, I can't think of a situation where we need to. So then you probably don't have to worry about us using it all that often.
But you.
There's gonna, there's no, well, here's the rule, no, 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 there's always gonna be insect.
And then you also then need the power to force them to decommission without having a decommissioning bond then. Have that power to say, okay, well, now you decommission it and you paid a decommission bond. But if you take out a decommissioning plan as a requirement, you lose that power and authority because all of the, the last section where it talks about discontinue of use is Cause all of the, the last section where it talks about discontinue of use is all predicated on having a decommissioning plan.
Cause you'll leverage.
Yes. And, and you know, we've learned, or I hope we have learned that we need to have that. What would.
I mean, indirectly, the Chinese restaurant is a good example of why you need a decommissioning plan.
A decommissioning plan does not necessarily mean a decommission.
Right. And so, and right, there can be, right, there, there, I think there are some other things, but, but we have to wait to hear back from the trustee. Because one of the other things that I know was a question, and I, it was a question for us too, was, um, you know, and they were going to go and do some research. And Lisa and I gave them examples of where they could look. I'm sure most of them knew anyway, but just, you know, is, is, is 500 square feet the right? Should it be a thousand? Should it be 250? But so they were going to do some research on that too. And I said, that's fine. That's easy. We can change it, change the value in the, in the, uh, you know, the draft law and it doesn't impact anything else anymore.
No, decommissioning is critical. Otherwise you have derelict infrastructure.
All of them. But, um, one of the things I did get a subsequent email from, oh, so then I noticed that the statement of purpose, which we had included in this was not, I guess it was.
Did you see my response back to this?
Yes. Well, I thought, yes, but it wasn't in the resolution or something.
It just wasn't in the preamble of the local law.
So, but Drew Riedel made a good point. He said, how does this code help take advantage of a safe, abundant, renewable and non-diluting energy source? And I thought, oh, I guess it doesn't really, in a way, whatever. So I don't know whether they'll keep that, but, um, it does help to mitigate adverse aesthetic impacts. And it does further the comprehensive plan. So I'm not sure about that. Maybe I stepped into that, but. But it was, you know, I think the question also came up, what are you doing to incentivize people to go solar? And I said, not our job. Our job is to.
Right. As to maybe as the, maybe the village can throw a mechanism, but. Um, but yeah, comp plan would be a great way to do that.
This is our, this is ours. So it was quite interesting. And in fact, I realized later, yeah. We left at nine 30. Just want to let you know.
Yeah.
Whoa.
It was a long meeting.
And I realized later, I abrogated my duties because I was liaison. I was supposed to stick it out till the end. So I don't know if anything wonderful came up after in the mayor's comments or general discussion, but maybe Susan.
There was talk about Carolyn Greenwald went to a board, a town meeting.
Oh, they go to the town meetings.
She started going to the town meetings and she just reported back on some positions that she thought would be advantageous, like a village historian.
Okay.
I forget Susan, anything else that Carolyn spoke about?
Not anything of substance. There was, there was something with regard to.
The youth commission discussion about village children being able to get jobs through the youth commission.
Right. Yeah. And I think we determined that it was, um, the village or the town of Lansing's youth.
Yes. It was not a commission that you or Wolfgang were on. We.
Correct.
Um, I think that was the only comments that I recall.
So it was an interesting meeting and I will, but by no means are we, um, free on our solar law. So be thinking about that, I guess. We'll see what comes of it. We'll have more, we'll hear back.
Yep. They're, like I said, uh, well, I think.
They have a Thursday meeting, but then their meeting actually is canceled.
The last, the last week, yeah, the last meeting of the month is not happening because of President's Day. So it won't be till March. So that's my report.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is other business, discussion of code corrections and revision of tree law.
Like I said, I was going to cross-reference what was in the actual code section for each district. And I cross-referenced to what was in the charts and circled either what was missing or what was in the charts that wasn't in the actual section. And you can see there's probably more tampering.
Yeah.
But yeah, but it, but it also opened up a larger can of worms. I was discussing with Natalie a little bit. Is why are somebody's in the sections? That could be a publication for the agents. I just wanted to get you that, that we should at least remedy, make sure that they. It was also, uh, weeks ago, either Lisa or myself, we sent a list of items that we had talked about in the past. Just small little things. Um, and we've run across a few items during meetings as we, you know, as we've gone along. Like a light, like a lot of adjustment, that type of stuff. However, you want to break things down as far as is looking at a, putting sections for different people to look at it, or however you want to do it. I guess that's, that's going to be your main goal is how to attack it at this point. And then of course you've got your tree law, which you want to modify.
So what we'll say for me, I am starting to, I started today to work on a lot line adjustment provision. Obviously the board wants to get input.
As to, I envisioned it as being something that would solely go to Mike. And then if there is any, if it made a non-conforming lot, then it would go to the board. And obviously there have to be variances involved at that point. So that was kind of my overarching view of it and how I was going to. Structure it, but when I read it, the board hates it, we can start some off.
It's unlikely, but.
I was going to say, not likely.
It should be more of an administrative thing than.
Never tell you we hate it in front of you.
Well, one of the, I actually came across a folder and I had 85 versions of the chart with circle stuff. And I tried to get them, but for example, um, one of the things is if it's allowed in CLT and it's allowed in CHT, it clearly should be allowed in CMT. That doesn't make any sense.
Was this Mike's thing?
This is Mike's. This is mine.
That's his print off one.
Yeah. So it looks like it is in the code, but it's just not on the chart.
Yes, exactly. I think, but I did not go back and look up each one of these.
But Mike did.
That's what I did.
Oh, you did. So that's what your X is.
That's what that's.
That's what I was wondering. Okay.
So assisted living facility is a good example. That's in CLT and CHT, but not CMT.
Yes.
But in the code it is.
In the code it is.
Just not on the chart. Yep.
Yeah. And one of the things that drives me crazy about this chart is over the top, it says districts, but it doesn't list.
It doesn't actually have the district.
Have the headers at the top, but this is LDR, MDR, and all the way across.
And you can just put a checkbox in each row and nuts, but yeah, that would be great if that could be fixed.
I have filled it in every time. Um, and I guess we didn't do PDA, but there were.
Yeah.
Things like, we really do need to talk about mixed use, I think. For example, where would we allow that and where, but you know, for, that's a larger thing. But yeah, I have a bunch of little stickies. So one of the things that I came across too was this code change list, which was a long time ago, but uses chart, okay. Preliminary platform major something, we did that, right? We changed that already. And the same with the platform maker or something. So that got done already. And the terms defined, there's a bunch of things we don't have, like propane tanks, greenhouses, et cetera, trams in the building accessory. Or the tourist homes, we talked about maybe adding STRs. Of course, we don't have a code for that, but. I don't know about that. And then low density residential mobile home, change to manufactured home.
That's now the word.
Words, yeah. Additional conditions for building slash land use permits. What's that mean?
What's that again?
Additional conditions for building or land use permits. It doesn't make any sense. Why would we need additional?
It'll come to you at some point.
Well, I wrote one, four, five, six, seven. CMT typically uses category, through all the definitions, but focus on, oh, well, you know, we went through the whole thing with the tox, detox center with assisted living specialties. I don't know if we need to do anything with that yet. Or do we want, we never got into adding anything about addictive services in any of these care facilities. You know what I mean? And I don't know whether, I think we should.
I think so.
Throughout the thing, I just kept coming, the first time I came across it, I think, I wonder if that general plan, we talk about the general plan. I think they, they mean the comprehensive plan.
Oh, it's referred to as the general plan in the code.
That's from, and I found that out when I went to research uptown, when they wanted to do the zoning change, which is, this is about the fourth time it's been changed.
Yes.
And it started where it's now at.
Yes.
It came full circle. Um, and that's when I came across general plan. I thought, ah, it became the comprehensive plan, sort of. But those were some of the things I had, but I mean, that's just touching. I don't know.
Where would, if anywhere, a dispensary fall out to this?
Oh, a drug dispensary?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
Don't say pharmacy, by the way, because.
Don't have the mail wanted.
Yeah.
Oh, we passed a, we passed.
I didn't, unroad 13.
Well, I'm just saying.
He decided not to do a dispense. We. Yeah.
Right. So when that changes, where's it going to fall on here? Because we also don't have any undertakers who are outlets here right now, but I mean, they're on the, they're on the.
Is it an undertaker?
Right. No.
I said, somebody out of their basement.
It's a lot. Yeah. But we don't have.
Right. We don't have it, but it's on the chart. Just, you know.
Oh, okay. I know where that is.
Just running through weird businesses in my head, thinking, where would this?
I haven't been up there for a while.
Are we, I went to Dryden. Are we at a point where form-based might make more sense than?
Well, that's another thought.
Yeah, we've talked about that before.
Lydia, I mean, that's a big question to ask. I, I kind of, okay. So here's what I was thinking, looking at, at the chart. My first thought was, wait a second, we need to step back and think about like, what do we want this village to be in 25 years, in 50 years? And then let's ask ourselves which of these things are, need to be adjusted.
Well, you know, one of the things that I still grasp is I, I had brought this up at one point with the board of trustees is we should have a meeting once a year or so to sort of establish some goals for the year even, or for the next five years or 10 years. But so far it hasn't happened.
I mean, theoretically, our comp plan should guide that, but.
But our comp plan, but they, they, A, everything gets, is so fast now with change that it becomes almost outdated the minute it's done. Well, there's a lot in our comp plan that we have not accomplished, by the way. In case anybody's noticed, but we have made some progress. And maybe, I suppose that's one place we could look is to say, do we want to take some of those issues and?
Focus on them. Put some energy.
We've made, well, we may, we've gotten sidewalks and even, and our tree.
Tree.
Regardless of how flawed either of those may be, we have made some progress. But there's a ways to go certainly. Maybe we should just start there, just to take a look at some of the stuff. I don't know.
Maybe to re-center ourselves so that we know when we look at the.
Help with priorities too. Just say, oh yeah, this is.
It's overwhelming. It's a lot. We have to pick out a whole thing and start somewhere, that first step, you know. But it is, it's very overwhelming and I, I don't know. Yeah, the form-based thing.
If it's, if it's, if it's any help, I've, A, there's help from the county.
Yes, there is help.
The county will come in and help us go through comp plan kind of stuff. So we could, you know, see about bringing somebody in every other meeting or whatever to help us chip away at it and understand it better. And the other thing too is I'm in the middle of doing our downtown plan for the city of Vethica. And it's been a long time, but it's, it's fresh how to get, get around to that.
What did you say the county could do for us?
So there are resources at the county planning department to help municipalities within the county who need to do things like update comp plans.
I wasn't sure. I, I thought we, we looked at that. It went, but how much help did they give us?
It changes year because every year they allocate a certain amount of funding for help from the county to the municipalities and for certain things. So it'd be a matter of checking in with them to see where their priorities are for 2024 and if they align with what we need to do.
Okay.
But if we can get help from them.
Oh, well, if we can get help, that would be great. Cause essentially we're volunteers, even though we do get paid. So it is just, it's not our day job. And so that does make a difference, let's face it.
Yeah.
And.
I'm, I'm a big fan of getting other experts in who can help us kind of, the same way that you were saying, like, oh, if we give a presentation to the trustees, they'll understand it better. Well, if somebody else comes in and gives us a presentation, we understand it better.
Yeah. Sounds good. Can you steer us to who to go to?
Uh, yes, I, I have a meeting with them tomorrow, so I can.
There you go. Good. But some of this easy stuff, like just updating the chart, what are we going to do? Or some of these little typos and things, should I just hand them over?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Just give Mike a little book. No, I'm sure.
I know, I'm just going to give him that. Okay. Wherever there's a thing, there's a tab. Wherever there's a tab, there's something there that you should do. You find it like a treasure.
Do you want to meet between now and the next meeting, just you and I, and we can talk about, just to make some headway on some things, talk about the tree?
Yeah, probably.
Tree law.
Got to divide and conquer, guys, because it's going to start getting more other stuff now, right? The spring is coming and this will just all fall by the wayside unless we start kind of each taking on a little bit of something.
I already made a bunch of notes on the tree law, so if you'd like my notes.
If I can have them or if you, you know, I'll give.
Can we take a copy of them tonight?
You can, you know what I will do is I will write them legibly.
I was pretty good at that.
No, actually, no, what I'll, no, what I'll do is I'll, I'll put them, I'll, I'll just download a PDF and make comments. So then no one has to read my handwriting. Okay. Cause I can barely read my handwriting, but I know myself, so I can do that. Yeah. I know what I was thinking. Um, cause they're all over the place, so I'll.
Yeah, but then when I go back and look at it, it makes sense to me for the most part. Every once in a while, I'm like.
Sometimes I think, what do you think that?
I have to go back to video recording of the meeting to figure out what it was when we were talking about when I took that note, for example. So hey, it looks like people are watching the meetings on YouTube because there's at least one and it's usually me. Okay. Anything else with?
Okay.
Code stuff or tree law stuff? Anybody?
So I haven't.
There's other stuff.
You've said, and you've talked about the buffer.
Yeah, I, I look at the tree law and, and one of the first things it does, it says is, and you know, and the buffer, blah, blah, blah. I'm like, well, then we need to look at both, if you're going to look at either. Uh, I reached out to a friend of mine who happens to own Plantsman Nursery. And, um, and I, and he said that he'd be happy to talk to us if we want someone to come in and talk about appropriateness of trees for certain areas, or how to make distinctions about which trees are valuable and which are not, and so on and so forth. So he'd be happy to come and do that.
Yeah, maybe sometime, maybe Lisa, if you and I get a chance to meet.
Yeah.
Maybe some, maybe like the second March meeting or something. I don't, well, I guess you would know too, what would be coming down then.
I'm going to miss the next meeting, 27th of the month.
Okay.
And I can attend the next meeting, but it's going to be virtual, but it, but it won't count.
Okay. That works.
And, um, I don't know if anybody read these things that I passed along, but you know, it's, there's just, there's that whole business of, you know, how far do you go with this and what is, and again, that's something that it, it's just a culture. We have to decide what's important to you.
Which means go back to the comp plan and see what we said was important as a village and figure out.
Right. Um, but you know, it's like, I think what's interesting is I've had heard a couple of radio things even actually how some places now, some of them not really local, they're, they're like more out west and stuff where they're, where tourism is, well, we have our own tourism, where they're actually starting to measure the value of trees and greenery for their gross domestic, or product, so to speak. Because it's good business, because it's beautiful and people want to be there. And I think it's something that, you know, it really is a lot of, a lot of it's just raising awareness. And people are just, we don't think about this stuff. And I, I have been guilty over the years too, because I just never ever thought the fact that, you know what? This tree was here way before I arrived and it belonged to everyone, kind of. And there's something about that that's starting to be recognized. And it's kind of interesting to think about it too, in terms of, so you can get at it from the emotional standpoint, from the climate standpoint. And, but also from a business standpoint, it can really be helpful.
Absolutely. I mean, think of how much more someone would want to go say to, you know, any of our shopping centers if there were, if there were. And, and the thing is, if you're going for practical stuff, it kind of doesn't matter. You know, if you're going to buy a thing at, at true value, you need that screw. So you're just going to go and it's not going to matter to you. But if you're going to go to the restaurant.
Yes.
You don't want to go to the restaurant in that strip mall. So if we want to encourage more economic vitality in the area by bringing in things other than just the most basic necessities, we really need to think about how our, our site plans encourage that or discourage that. Cause I'll tell you, true value will do fine, but the restaurants that are there are just going to revolve and revolve and revolve because they're not going to be terribly attractive.
Well, I think too about people also have to understand too, when it's your house, you're landscaping. You know, what do they say? 25% of your value is your landscaping. And then you, you know, when you drive around, what areas are appealing and then it's always nice landscaping.
Yeah.
That end. And so I think it's, we, when we're looking at our tree plan from a resident's standpoint, I, I think a little tension between too much regulation, not enough, but we've got to, I think we have to be strong about it, just to, to help people be aware. And, um, it was interesting to hear Hope and I forgot the other one's name. That they, oh yeah, we like trees and yeah, put a willow and suck up that water, you know? It's kind of interesting, but, so I think there's room for that. But okay, I'm going to work on getting you these.
Time for you and I to leave.
Okay.
But I'll wait.
I'll rewrite my notes. And I don't know if you saw, I attached an Excel spreadsheet to one of those that I, I replied. Because one of the people. to one of those, that I, I replied, because one of the people in the city of Vithika, because the city of Vithika is looking at their tree law. And so one of our planners, a couple of years ago, actually, last year, I think it was, put together all this research from all these municipalities and their tree laws. And so it's, it's a really extensive resource that we don't have to do, because someone else has done.
Yes.
And so the one, the one tab on that Excel spreadsheet is kind of like the gold standard, if you want to be pro-tree. And the second tab is also people who are doing very good work tree-wise, but that are more scaled to our size.
Okay, I would think that's important, because that's one of the things that, you know, you have to be realistic about this. We aren't, oh, whatever. I mean, I have, when we were doing some of the zoning stuff, I look at some of these places, and you just think, oh, what a dream, oh my God, I would love that. And yet, you know, there's, it's a little much, and you do lose some sort of individuality of things and stuff. It gets a little homogenized if it's too much. So it's finding that balance between things is really interesting. Okay.
Okay. Emile, anything you wanted to bring up?
Yes, actually, I, I want to kind of bring back up what's happening on Graham, just because I'd like to figure out if there's, you know, if there's other ways to think about that space, so that we can fit in a sidewalk, so that maybe we give it a road diet. Because right now, Graham Road is as wide as Trip Hammer, actually wider in some spaces. Do we, do we want to have a road, like, do we want our widest road to be Graham Road?
I mean, you're talking on that west.
Yeah, I mean, it's got, it's got two lanes in each direction. One's turning lane, and one's a street. So it's, it's a four-lane road. And like, you know, Trip Hammer right there isn't a four-lane road. It's two lanes in each direction.
Except I will say, to be able to have people turn right is a good thing. And so you need two lanes, don't you?
Well, if you want people to ride on red, then you need to have a lane that will just do that.
Yeah.
If you.
But it doesn't need to go the whole way down.
Just need to go the whole way down.
That's what I was saying.
So, I mean, we could give Graham Road a road diet. It always, it always bugs me when secondary roads are bigger than the primary roads. It doesn't make sense to me. You know, like, and like down on Route 13, near the, near the shopping area, it always bugs me how like Fairgrounds Parkway is so gigantic.
Yeah, it is.
It's, it's a huge, it's outsized, and it's.
And thereby low, it's, it's like, that whole thing is like huge.
It's, it's, it's like a highway-sized road, you know? And so, you know, if we're looking at how this space works, maybe one of the things we think about is a road diet.
Wouldn't that slow people down?
I think, I think it would, because I think a lot of people are coming out of Target, or I don't know the name of the road, but the perimeter road, they're going to turn right on to Graham Road, they're probably going to be turning right on to Trip Hammer to.
Yeah.
Go to 13 or whatnot. But there are a few people that want to go straight or turn left. And, you know, if you make that one lane, then the right turn people are going to be held up, and it's going to cause congestion.
Or the other way around, you make it a right turn only. So the people in the right are always going right, and the people in that center lane could either go.
I think it already is that way.
That's the way it is now.
It's already set up that the left.
Yeah, the center lane can go, yeah.
Left only, and the other turn only.
That, but you don't need two lanes coming all the way.
The target turn.
Yeah, so what you do is you, you shrink it, so there's one lane coming from, say, Target, and then you widen it at the intersection.
We have to, we'd have to.
No, but then you have, you also have the pediatrics place.
Yep, and it would still work for them.
Traffic.
Well, I'm going to tell you, only because I travel that, I'm always like going shopping all the time down in that area. And I always go that, I go that way a lot. It's a heavily, heavily trafficked area.
It is.
I mean, we could use the, the bigger space.
I will, I will say this, if you look at, if you look at the data, the narrower a road is.
The safer.
Frankly, the safer it is. So if we're looking for safety first, narrower roads are safer. Because when you have more width, people tend to move more quickly through the space. So there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of traffic data out there about how wide a road should be for the number of cars that go on it. And.
It would be interesting to see how much driver frustration from narrowing the road leads to road reach. Because I'm, I'm in agreement with the range.
Yeah, Mike's.
I get down there a lot, and it's, it's beneficial to have it two lanes all the way, because you may, you've got the Northeast Pediatrics. I mean, if you narrow it, if you narrow it down to one lane, and then open it back up again, it's.
And people are so aggressive.
Let's, let's hang on one second.
So my, my question was, how do I talk to John about that?
And not be able to do that period, because those roads were designed egress and ingress for the capacity of the mall.
Right.
So it doesn't matter whether the mall is down now or not, it has the same capacity. So you have to have a certain size entrance, egress and egress. And that was what was designed in those three roads with Tops, Cathwood, and then Graham Road West. So it might not even be a possibility to, to narrow it down.
Well, I mean, as you know, as, I'm just saying. As you, as you check with John about, you know, just the whole concept of a crosswalk or, you know, if he's got any thoughts about, you know, kind of back to the Northeast Peds discussion, you know, maybe.
I've got that.
Bring that up to and see.
Could be skinned.
Is, is there any way to make that entire road safer through some traffic control device or re-engineering, or whatever those means might be?
Yeah.
See, I'm sure he's got thoughts. It might just be no way now, but I mean, it's a thought.
I, I would say this, I'm, I know there's a way, but it means sacrificing something else.
Yeah, well, there's always a trade-off.
Yeah, there's always a trade-off.
Yep. No free lunch.
What else, Emile?
That's it.
Yeah.
I just want to know if anything exciting is going on that we should all know about.
Don't steal Mike's thunder, yeah, hang on a second.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm asking him. Natalie's.
You want to go now? Well, no, I always do one of these two last.
Yes.
I'll go last.
He's going to say go.
How about, Lorraine, you?
I don't have anything, but I have a question. Do you have an updated trustee meeting liaison?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm March. If that helps, and yeah, I've got it.
Okay.
I thought that I had said.
It goes through and read it the other day. I'm like, I usually keep.
You are April.
Am I July?
Okay.
You are June.
I think he was.
June, June.
You're July.
Do we need to have?
You're, you're May. Send it out to everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be June, okay.
I'm going to be gone for a week and a half.
Wow.
Well, maybe they'll change their meeting date.
Or maybe they just won't have it.
I just said, there won't be one.
Anything else?
I don't have anything.
Anything?
Nope, just working on my lot line adjustment.
Well, well, I got nothing. No updates.
Stinker.
Nothing? I make something up. I mean.
No need, no need.
How, how are you on MNT coming on, the lights are true?
I know, I was, I drove by and noticed they haven't done it yet.
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed.
I worked it.
You're still working on it.
I just sent you all the liaison schedule for this year.
Thank you.
Don't let it go.
Okay. With that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:40 PM.
Eight forty?
Anybody?
Oh, I'm going to adjourn.
Bye, Lisa. Second, bye. Later, have a good one.
Bye.